Brown v Board of Education of Topeka, 347 U.S. 483, 1954, was a landmark United States Supreme Court case in which the court declared state laws establishing separate public schools for black and white students to be unconstitutional. The decision effectively overturned the Plessy v Ferguson decision of 1,896, which allowed state-sponsored segregation, insofar as it applied to public education. Handled down on May 17, 1954, the Warren Court's unanimous, 9 to 0, decision stated that separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. As a result, dejure racial segregation was ruled a violation of the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution. This ruling paved the way for integration and was a major victory of the Civil Rights Movement, and a model for many future impact litigation cases. However, the decision's 14 pages did not spell out any sort of method for ending racial segregation in schools, and the Court's second decision in Brown 2, 349 U.S. 294, 1955, only ordered states to desegregate with all deliberate speed. Background: For much of the 60 years preceding the Brown case, race relations in the United States had been dominated by racial segregation. This policy had been endorsed in 1896 by the United States Supreme Court case of Plessy v Ferguson, which held that as long as the separate facilities for the separate races were equal, segregation did not violate the Fourteenth Amendment: "No state shall deny to any person the equal protection of the laws." The plaintiffs in Brown asserted that the system of racial separation, while masquerading as providing separate but equal treatment of both white and black Americans, instead perpetuated inferior accommodations, services, and treatment for black Americans. Racial segregation in education varied widely from the 17 states that required racial segregation to the 16 in which it was prohibited. Brown was influenced by UNESCO's 1950 statement, signed by a wide variety of internationally renowned scholars, titled "The Race Question." This declaration denounced previous attempts at scientifically justifying racism as well as morally condemning racism. Another work that the Supreme Court cited was Gunnar Muirdal's "An American Dilemma: The Negro Problem and Modern Democracy," 1944. Muirdal had been a signatory of the UNESCO Declaration. The research performed by the educational psychologists Kenneth B. Clark and Mamie Phipps-Clark also influenced the Court's decision. The Clark's Dahl Test studies presented substantial arguments to the Supreme Court about how segregation affected black schoolchildren's mental status. The United States and the Soviet Union were both at the height of the Cold War during this time, and U.S. officials, including Supreme Court justices, were highly aware of the harm that segregation and racism played on America's international image. When Justice William O. Douglas traveled to India in 1950, the first question he was asked was, "Why does America tolerate the lynching of Negroes?" Douglas later wrote that he had learned from his travels that "the attitude of the United States toward its colored minorities is a powerful factor in our relations with India." Chief Justice Earl Warren, nominated to the Supreme Court by President Eisenhower, echoed Douglas's concerns in a 1954 speech to the American Bar Association, proclaiming that "our American system like all others is on trial both at home and abroad: the extent to which we maintain the spirit of our Constitution with its Bill of Rights will in the long run do more to make it both secure and the object of adulation than the number of hydrogen bombs we stockpile." Case: Filing and Arguments In 1951, a class-action suit was filed against the Board of Education of the city of Topeka, Kansas in the United States District Court for the District of Kansas. The plaintiffs were 13 Topeka parents on behalf of their 20 children. The suit called for the school district to reverse its policy of racial segregation. The Topeka Board of Education operated separate elementary schools under an 1,879 Kansas law, which permitted, but did not require, districts to maintain separate elementary school facilities for black and white students in 12 communities with populations over 15,000. The plaintiffs had been recruited by the leadership of the Topeka NAACP. Notable among the Topeka NAACP leaders were the chairman McKinley Burnett, Charles Scott, one of three serving as legal counsel for the chapter, and Lucinda Todd. The named plaintiff, Oliver L. Brown, was a parent, a welder in the shops of the Santa Fe Railroad, an assistant pastor at his local church, and an African-American. He was convinced to join the lawsuit by Scott, a childhood friend. Brown's daughter Linda, a third grader, had to walk six blocks to her school bus stop to ride to Monroe Elementary, her segregated black school one mile (1.6 kilometers) away, while Sumner Elementary, a white school, was seven blocks from her house. As directed by the NAACP leadership, the parents each attempted to enroll their children in the closest neighborhood school in the fall of 1951. They were each refused enrollment and directed to the segregated schools. The Case Oliver Brown ETALV The Board of Education of Topeka, Kansas was named after Oliver Brown as a legal strategy to have a man at the head of the roster. The lawyers, and the National Chapter of the NAACP, also felt that having Mr. Brown at the head of the roster would be better received by the U.S. Supreme Court justices. The 13 plaintiffs were Oliver Brown, Darlene Brown, Lena Carper, Sadie Emanuel, Marguerite Emerson, Shirley Fleming, Zelma Henderson, Shirley Hodison, Maude Lawton, Alma Lewis, Iona Richardson, and Lucinda Todd. The last surviving plaintiff, Zelma Henderson, died in Topeka on May 20, 2008, at age 88. The District Court ruled in favor of the Board of Education, citing the U.S. Supreme Court precedent set in Plessy v Ferguson, 163 U.S. 537, 1,896, which had upheld a state law requiring separate but equal segregated facilities for blacks and whites in railway cars. The three-judge District Court panel found that segregation in public education has a detrimental effect on Negro children, but denied relief on the ground that the Negro and white schools in Topeka were substantially equal with respect to buildings, transportation, curricula, and educational qualifications of teachers. Supreme Court Review The case of Brown v Board of Education as heard before the Supreme Court combined five cases: Brown itself, Briggs v Elliott, filed in South Carolina; Davis v County School Board of Prince Edward County, filed in Virginia; Gebhardt v Belton, filed in Delaware; and Balling v Sharp, filed in Washington, D.C. All were NAACP-sponsored cases. The Davis case, the only case of the five originating from a student protest, began when 16-year-old Barbara Rose Johns organized and led a 450-student walkout of Modon High School. The Gebhardt case was the only one where a trial court, affirmed by the Delaware Supreme Court, found that discrimination was unlawful; in all the other cases the plaintiffs had lost as the original courts had found discrimination to be lawful. The Kansas case was unique among the group in that there was no contention of gross inferiority of the segregated school's physical plant, curriculum, or staff. The District Court found substantial equality as to all such factors. The lower court, in its opinion, noted that, "In Topeka, the physical facilities, the curricula, courses of study, qualification, and quality of teachers, as well as other educational facilities in the two sets of schools comparable." The lower court observed that colored children in many instances are required to travel much greater distances than they would be required to travel could they attend a white school, but also noted that the school district transports colored children to and from school free of charge and that oh such service provided to white children. In the Delaware case, the District Court judge in Gebhardt ordered that the black students be admitted to the white high school due to the substantial harm of segregation and the differences that made the separate schools unequal. The NAACP's chief counsel, Thurgood Marshall, who was later appointed to the U.S. Supreme Court in 1967, argued the case before the Supreme Court for the plaintiffs. Assistant Attorney General Paul Wilson later distinguished emeritus professor of law at the University of Kansas conducted the state's ambivalent defense in his first appellate argument. In December 1952, the Justice Department filed a friend-of-the-court brief in the case. The brief was unusual in its heavy emphasis on foreign policy considerations of the Truman administration in a case ostensibly about domestic issues. Of the seven pages covering the interests of the United States, five focused on the way school segregation hurt the United States in the Cold War competition for the friendship and allegiance of non-white peoples in countries then gaining independence from colonial rule. Attorney General James P. McReynery noted that,[617.34][617.34]"The existence of discrimination against minority groups in the United States has an adverse effect upon our relations with other countries." Racial discrimination furnishes grist for the communist propaganda mills. The brief also quoted a letter by Secretary of State Dean Akinson lamenting that,[635.81][635.81]"The United States is under constant attack in the foreign press, over the foreign radio, and in such international bodies as the United Nations because of various practices of discrimination in this country." British barrister and parliamentarian Anthony Lester has written that although the Court's opinion in Brown made no reference to these considerations of foreign policy, there is no doubt that they significantly influenced the decision. Unanimous Opinion and Consensus Building In spring 1953, the Court heard the case but was unable to decide the issue and asked to rehear the case in fall 1953, with special attention to whether the Fourteenth Amendment's Equal Protection Clause prohibited the operation of separate public schools for whites and blacks. The Court reargued the case at the behest of Associate Justice Felix Frankfurter, who used reargument as a stalling tactic, to allow the Court to gather a consensus around a Brown opinion that would outlaw segregation. The justices in support of desegregation spent much effort convincing those who initially intended to dissent to join a unanimous opinion. Although the legal effect would be same for a majority rather than unanimous decision, it was felt that dissent could be used by segregation supporters as a legitimizing counterargument. Conference notes and draft decisions illustrate the division of opinions before the decision was issued. Justices Douglas, Black, Burton, and Minton were predisposed to overturn Plessy. Fred M. Vincent noted that Congress had not issued the segregation legislation. Stanley F. Reed discussed incomplete cultural assimilation and states' rights and was inclined to the view that segregation worked to the benefit of the African-American community. Tom C. Clark wrote that "we had led the states on to think segregation is okay and we should let them work it out." Felix Frankfurter and Robert H. Jackson disapproved of segregation, but were also opposed to judicial activism and expressed concerns about the proposed decision's enforceability. Chief Justice Vincent had been a key stumbling block. After Vincent died in September 1953, President Dwight D. Eisenhower appointed Earl Warren as chief justice. Warren had supported the integration of Mexican-American students in California school systems following Mendez v Westminster. However, Eisenhower invited Earl Warren to a White House dinner, where the president told him, "These are not bad people. All they are concerned about is to see that their sweet little girls are not required to sit in school alongside some big overgrown Negroes." Nevertheless, the Justice Department sided with the African-American plaintiffs. In his reading of the unanimous decision, Justice Warren noted the adverse psychological effects that segregated schools had on African-American children. The chief's reliance on shoddy social science is widely seen as irresponsible. Brown's side of the Kenneth and Mamie Dahl study was criticized by Justice Clarence Thomas in a later concurring opinion for implying black inferiority. According to Susan Firestone, the study itself is dubious in conclusion and unreliable in reproduction. While all but one justice personally rejected segregation, the judicial restraint faction questioned whether the Constitution gave the Court the power to order its end. The activist faction believed the Fourteenth Amendment did give the necessary authority and were pushing to go ahead. Warren, who held only a recess appointment, held his tongue until the Senate confirmed his appointment. Warren convened a meeting of the justices, and presented to them the simple argument that the only reason to sustain segregation was an honest belief in the inferiority of Negroes. Warren further submitted that the Court must overrule Plessy to maintain its legitimacy as an institution of liberty, and it must do so unanimously to avoid massive Southern resistance. He began to build a unanimous opinion. Although most justices were immediately convinced, Warren spent some time after this famous speech convincing everyone to sign onto the opinion. Justices Jackson and Reed finally decided to drop their dissent. The final decision was unanimous. Warren drafted the basic opinion and kept circulating and revising it until he had an opinion endorsed by all the members of the Court. Reed was the last holdout and reportedly cried during the reading of the opinion. Holding Reporters who observed the Court holding were surprised by two facts. First, the Court made a unanimous decision. Prior to the ruling, there were reports that the Court members were sharply divided and might not be able to agree. Second, the attendance of Justice Robert H. Jackson who had suffered a mild heart attack and was not expected to return to the bench until early June 1954. Perhaps to emphasize the unanimity of the Court, perhaps from a desire to be present when the history-making verdict was announced, Justice Jackson was in his accustomed seat when the Court convened. Reporters also noted that Dean Akinson, former Secretary of State, who had related the case to foreign policy considerations, and Herbert Brownell, the current attorney general, were in the courtroom. The key holding of the Court was that, even if segregated black and white schools were of equal quality in facilities and teachers, segregation by itself was harmful to black students and unconstitutional. They found that a significant psychological and social disadvantage was given to black children from the nature of segregation itself, drawing on research conducted by Kenneth Clark assisted by June Chigalloff. This aspect was vital because the question was not whether the schools were equal, which under Plessy they nominally should have been, but whether the doctrine of separate was constitutional. The justices answered with a strong no. "Oh yes, segregation of children in public schools solely on the basis of race, even though the physical facilities and other tangible factors may be equal, deprive the children of the minority group of equal educational opportunities. We believe that it does." Segregation of white and colored children in public schools has a detrimental effect upon the colored children. The effect is greater when it has the sanction of the law, for the policy of separating the races is usually interpreted as denoting the inferiority of the Negro group. A sense of inferiority affects the motivation of a child to learn. Segregation with the sanction of law, therefore, has a tendency to the educational and mental development of Negro children and to deprive them of some of the benefits they would receive in a racial-integrated school system. We conclude that, in the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. Therefore, we hold that the plaintiffs and others similarly situated for whom the actions have been brought are, by reason of the segregation complained of, deprived of the equal protection of the laws guaranteed by the Fourteenth Amendment. Local Outcomes The Topeka junior high schools had been integrated since 1941. Topeka High School was integrated from its inception in 1871 and its sports teams from 1949 on. The Kansas law permitting segregated schools allowed them only below the high school level. Soon after the District Court decision, election outcomes, and the political climate in Topeka changed. The Board of Education of Topeka began to end segregation in the Topeka elementary schools in August 1953, integrating two attendance districts. All the Topeka elementary schools were changed to neighborhood attendance centers in January 1956, although existing students were allowed to continue attending their prior assigned schools at their option. Plaintiff Zelma Henderson, in a 2004 interview, recalled that "no demonstrations or tumult accompanied desegregation in Topeka's schools. They accepted it," she said. "It wasn't too long until they integrated the teachers and principals." The Topeka Public Schools administration building is named in honor of McKinley Burnett, NAACP chapter president who organized the case. Monroe Elementary was designated a U.S. National Historic Site unit of the National Park Service on October 26, 1992. Social Implications Not everyone accepted the Brown v Board of Education decision. In Virginia, Senator Harry F. Byrd, senior, organized the massive resistance movement that included the closing of schools rather than desegregating them. See, for example, The Southern Manifesto. For more implications of the Brown decision, see School Integration in the United States. Deep South Texas Attorney General John Ben Shepard organized a campaign to generate legal obstacles to implementation of desegregation. In 1957, Arkansas Governor Orville Faubus called out his state's National Guard to block black students' entry to Little Rock Central High School. President Dwight Eisenhower responded by deploying elements of the 101st Airborne Division from Fort Campbell, Kentucky, to Arkansas and by federalizing Arkansas's National Guard. Also in 1957, Florida's response was mixed. Its legislature passed an interposition resolution denouncing the decision and declaring it null and void. But Florida Governor Leroy Collins, though joining in the protest against the Court decision, refused to sign it, arguing that the attempt to overturn the ruling must be done by legal methods. In Mississippi, fear of violence prevented any plaintiff from bringing a school desegregation suit for the next nine years. When Medgar Evers sued to desegregate Jackson, Mississippi schools in 1963, white citizens council member Byron De La Bequith murdered him. Two subsequent trials resulted in hung juries. Bequith was not convicted of the murder until 1994. In 1963, Alabama Governor George Wallace personally blocked the door to Foster Auditorium at the University of Alabama to prevent the enrollment of two black students. This became the infamous stand-in-the-schoolhouse door where Wallace personally backed his "segregation now, segregation tomorrow, segregation forever" policy that he had stated in his 1963 inaugural address. He moved aside only when confronted by General Henry Graham of the Alabama National Guard, who was ordered by President John F. Kennedy to intervene. Upland South In North Carolina, there was often a strategy of nominally accepting Brown, but tacitly resisting it. On May 18, 1954, the Greensboro, North Carolina school board declared that it would abide by the Brown ruling. This was the result of the initiative of D. E. Hodgins Jr., a former Rhodes scholar and prominent attorney, who chaired the school board. This made Greensboro the first, and for years the only, city in the South to announce its intent to comply. However, others in the city resisted integration, putting up legal obstacles to the actual implementation of school desegregation for years afterward, and in 1969, the federal government found the city was not in compliance with the 1964 Civil Rights Act. Transition to a fully-integrated school system did not begin until 1971, after numerous local lawsuits and both nonviolent and violent demonstrations. Historians have noted the irony that Greensboro, which had heralded itself as such a progressive city, was one of the last holdouts for school desegregation. In Mobley, Missouri, the schools were desegregated, as ordered. However, after 1955, the African-American teachers from the local Negro school were not retained; this was ascribed to poor performance. They appealed their dismissal in Naomi Brooks ETAL, Appellants, v School District of City of Mobley, Missouri, et cetera, ETAL, but it was upheld, and Scottus declined to hear a further appeal. North Many northern cities also had de facto segregation policies, which resulted in a vast gulf in educational resources between black and white communities. In Harlem, New York, for example, not a single new school had been built since the turn of the century, nor did a single nursery school exist, even as the second great migration caused overcrowding of existing schools. Existing schools tended to be dilapidated and staffed with inexperienced teachers. Northern officials were in denial of the segregation, but Brown helped stimulate activism among African-American parents like May Mallory, who, with support of the NAACP, initiated a successful lawsuit against the city and state of New York on Brown's principles. Mallory and thousands of other parents bolstered the pressure of the lawsuit with a school boycott in 1959. During the boycott, some of the first freedom schools of the period were established. The city responded to the campaign by permitting more open transfers to high-quality, historically white schools. New York's African-American community, and northern desegregation activists generally, now found themselves contending with the problem of white flight, however. The intellectual roots of Plessy v Ferguson, the landmark United States Supreme Court decision upholding the constitutionality of racial segregation in 1896 under the doctrine of separate but equal were, in part, tied to the scientific racism of the era. However, the popular support for the decision was more likely a result of the racist beliefs held by many whites at the time. In deciding Brown v Board of Education, the Supreme Court rejected the ideas of scientific racists about the need for segregation, especially in schools. The Court buttressed its holding by citing, in footnote 11, "social science research about the harms to black children caused by segregated schools." Both scholarly and popular ideas of hereditary and played an important role in the attack and backlash that followed the Brown decision. The Mankind Quarterly was founded in 1960, in part in response to the Brown decision. Legal Criticism and Praise William Rehnquist wrote a memo titled "A Random Thought on the Segregation Cases" when he was a law clerk for Justice Robert H. Jackson in 1952, during early deliberations that led to the Brown v Board of Education decision. In his memo, Rehnquist argued, "I realize that it is an unpopular and unhumanitarian position, for which I have been excoriated by liberal colleagues, but I think Plessy v Ferguson was right and should be reaffirmed." Rehnquist continued, to the argument that "a majority may not deprive a minority of its constitutional right; the answer must be made that while this is sound in theory, in the long run it is the majority who will determine what the constitutional rights of the minorities are." Rehnquist also argued for Plessy with other law clerks. However, during his 1971 confirmation hearings, Rehnquist said,[1595.18][1595.18]"I believe that the memorandum was prepared by me as a statement of Justice Jackson's tentative views for his own use." Justice Jackson had initially planned to join a dissent in Brown. Later, at his 1986 hearings for the slot of Chief Justice, Rehnquist put further distance between himself and the 1952 memo, the bald statement that "Plessy was right and should be reaffirmed," was not an accurate reflection of my own views at the time. In any event, while serving on the Supreme Court, Rehnquist made no effort to reverse or undermine the Brown decision, and frequently relied upon it as precedent. Chief Justice Warren's reasoning was broadly criticized by contemporary legal academics with Judge Learned Hand decrying that the Supreme Court had assumed the role of a third legislative chamber and Herbert Wexler finding Brown impossible to justify based on neutral principles. Some aspects of the Brown decision are still debated. Notably, Supreme Court Justice Clarence Thomas, himself an African-American, wrote in Missouri v Jenkins, 1995, "That at the very least, Brown I has been misunderstood by the Courts. Brown I did not say that racially-isolated schools were inherently inferior; the harm that it identified was tied purely to dejure segregation, not de facto segregation. Indeed, Brown I itself did not need to rely upon any psychological or social science research in order to announce the simple, yet fundamental truth that the government cannot discriminate among its citizens on the basis of race. Segregation was not unconstitutional because it might have caused psychological feelings of inferiority. Public school systems that separated blacks and provided them with superior educational resources making blacks feel superior to whites sent to lesser schools would violate the Fourteenth Amendment, whether or not the white students felt stigmatized, just as do school systems in which the positions of the races are reversed. Psychological injury or benefit is irrelevant. Given that desegregation has not produced the predicted leaps forward in black educational achievement, there is no reason to think that black students cannot learn as well when surrounded by members of their own race as when they are in an integrated environment. Because of their distinctive histories and traditions, black schools can function as the center and symbol of black communities, and provide examples of independent black leadership, success, and achievement. Some constitutional originalists, notably Raoul Berger in his influential 1977 book "Government by Judiciary," make the case that Brown cannot be defended by reference to the original understanding of the Fourteenth Amendment. They support this reading of the Fourteenth Amendment by noting that the Civil Rights Act of 1,875 did not ban segregated schools and that the same Congress that passed the Fourteenth Amendment also voted to segregate schools in the District of Columbia. Other originalists, including Michael W. McConnell, a federal judge on the United States Court of Appeals for the Tenth Circuit, in his article "Originalism and the Desegregation Decisions," argue that the radical reconstructionists who spearheaded the Fourteenth Amendment were in favor of desegregated Southern schools. evidence supporting this interpretation of the Fourteenth Amendment has come from archived congressional records showing that proposals for federal legislation which would enforce school integration were debated in Congress a few years following the amendment's ratification the case also has attracted some criticism from more liberal authors, including some who say that Chief Justice Warren's reliance on psychological criteria to find a harm against segregated blacks was unnecessary for example, Drew S. Days has written, We have developed criteria for evaluating the constitutionality of racial classifications that do not depend upon findings of psychic harm or social science evidence they are based rather on the principle that distinctions between citizens solely because of their ancestry are by their very nature odious to a free people whose institutions are founded upon the doctrine of equality, High Rabbi Ashi v United States, three hundred and twenty US eighty one, nineteen forty three in his book The Tempting of America, page eighty two, Robert Bork endorsed the Brown decision as follows by nineteen fifty four, when Brown came up for decision, it had been apparent for some time that segregation rarely if ever produced equality quite aside from any question of psychology, the physical facilities provided for blacks were not as good as those provided for whites that had been demonstrated in a long series of cases the court's realistic choice, therefore, was either to abandon the quest for equality by allowing segregation or to forbid segregation in order to achieve equality there was no third choice either choice would violate one aspect of the original understanding, but there was no possibility of avoiding that since equality and segregation were mutually inconsistent, though the ratifiers did not understand that, both could not be honored when that is seen, it is obvious the court must choose equality and prohibit state-imposed segregation the purpose that brought the Fourteenth Amendment into being was equality before the law, and equality, not separation, was written into the law in June nineteen eighty seven, Philip Elman, a civil rights attorney who served as an associate in the Solicitor